Good to go, whatever you're ready.
Okay, so.
Excuse me.
Keith, could you turn the lights out?
Thank you. Great, thank you. Perfect.
Okay, so for the last few years, we've had two financial sessions. One was the financial overview, and the second was the financial health. So today was kind of back-to-back.
Okay.
Set of different days. The financial overview gives us some time to spend reviewing the results for the previous year. That's important to get clarity on understanding the financial activity and how the budget results compared to actual. We're gonna focus on a few of the more relevant line items in the statements. So the first statement is the balance sheet. And looking at the balance sheet, you can see that we have eleven million dollars of unrestricted cash this year, and an unsigned fund balance of seven point five million. Seeing how that seven point five million lines up with our targets. Okay.
You just said two numbers, they don't show up any of anywhere on the page I'm looking at.
Yeah, the seven and the three something add up to eleven, and then the bottom number is seven and a half down to the other side.
Cash and investment pool. At the top.
One more time.
The top two, cash and over cash and investment.
Seven and five, okay.
Those two added together. So then, when we look at our unsigned fund balance graph up there, we can see that we have three benchmarks. The top one would be if we had four months of budget in our reserves. That would be, that would require twelve point nine, and that's an exceptionally strong target, and anything more than that would be excessive. The middle target is three months, and that's generally considered to be a strong target, and that's about nine point seven million to get to that benchmark. The bottom one is the GFOA minimum, which is about six point four billion, which I propose we shouldn't be targeting as, then when we hit bad times, we'd fall below that. So you can see from the graph that we peaked in twelve, and then we've, we've had a small decline since then, so we're...
Yeah, this...
I thought you just said unsigned fund balance was eleven million.
No, the total cash was eleven million. The unsigned fund balance was about seven, seven point five.
Seven point five, oh wait, okay, I'm there, thanks.
Yeah, okay. All right, so then...
So, can we talk about that?
Yeah.
If you, if you, based on the classes that I took, and based on just the knowledge of how much we should be able to carry without, if we had an issue, we've seen a decline. Is it my interpretation of this that we're, we've, we've hit the, what should be the bottom of where we want to be?
I'd say that's a pretty fair statement. You want to party?
If you look at it, I remember three years ago, I believe, that number we, we had talked about there because it had declined twice was, was something we should keep an eye on.
Keep an eye on, yeah.
And again, I know this has been, since I've been here, I've talked about the budget amendments. It's, it's gonna have to be a very good case this year, based on what I see from my perspective, to hit the surplus anymore than we already have. I don't know if that's... But from my perspective, that's how I interpret this.
One other note, one other thing that's worth noting is that the targets themselves have moved slightly due to the budget expansion.
Right.
So as our budget, as our budget expands, so does the target.
Right.
So we were closer to the target.
Did we put anything back into unassigned?
Uh, you, uh, we, we put two hundred thousand dollars last year in, back into surplus. But part of the problem for us to find is that we haven't accounted for that as, by assigning it for purposes. So while we have a total increase in our fund balance, we've already found a purpose for it somewhere.
Right.
Okay, so going to the next page is the statement of revenues, and this is where we can see the bottom line, the net change in the fund balance for last year was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Yep.
Which is coincidentally, when we were up at the, um, in New York to make our presentation, we pointed out that over the last seven years, we had exactly two hundred thousand over that entire period that had been used, and that how much we value not using surplus. So right after that, then we, we, we had the coincidence of putting back two hundred thousand. So now over eight years, it's exactly even. Uh, the, the next page has just a quick look at our revenues for the year we had budgeted. The final budget was thirty-five point six million, our actual revenues were thirty-six point one. So we had a favorable variance of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand for FY sixteen. And just walking through that, we can see that, that mainly consisted of some personal property taxes, some state shared income taxes, our healthcare rebate, and the school zone camera fines. State of Maryland police protection, and then the total net was five twenty-seven.
So the health insurance rebate was because the consortium...
Pay, pay, pay favorable settlement, yeah.
And they were able to give money back to you?
We got, we got about five hundred thousand back in sixteen. Exponentially wise, I've listed there for your review, the variances. That's a schedule in the back of the budget book. You can see police had a large variance favorable of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. Traffic had two hundred thousand. Fire department had a hundred and thirty-nine. And when we go through to the final analysis, which we did last year, and everybody seemed to like seeing how this fits together, because the question always is, is, you know, how could we have budgeted two point five million as a use but end up putting into surplus two hundred and seventy-eight thousand? So this, this explains that. To walk through it, you can see that we started with two point five. We carried nine hundred and forty-six thousand in encumbrances from the previous year.
Keith, I've lost you now, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, but going right up there at the top of that schedule, where it says, "Original budget, two point five million," starting right there. Uh, page fourteen. Page fourteen.
See, the, the last thing I knew what we were talking about was the health insurance rebate.
I got you.
Yeah, I was, I was lost too.
Me too. I was trying to catch up.
Sorry. Here we go.
Oh, you did skip ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, jumped ahead to the summary. And this is gonna tie it all together. We had a use budgeted of two point five, and we carried nine hundred and forty-six thousand of encumbrances from the previous year. And as we just discussed during the year, we have some ordinances. In sixteen, we had three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of that. So that's how we ended up with...
Three point eight.
Three point eight. We had a favorable revenue variance for those items that are listed, a five twenty-six. We had expenditure variances of three point six million. All the major variances are listed there. And then you can see we ended up with putting two hundred and seventy-eight thousand in. So this is just helpful to kind of understand as we go forward in the FY eighteen budget, what the results look like compared to a budget.
Yep. That's good. That's a great summary.
Jumping ahead, just gonna have a quick discussion about the water sewer fund statement of net position. We can see that cash fell from eight million to four million. And the net, unrestricted net position declined from five point six million to negative two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, well, let's not go any further than that, huh? So the general fund looks good. And now we're over into water and sewer, and can you go back? I'm up at the top, you circled these things. I'm assuming I'm following the circles on the page?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah.
So you said that something went from eight to four, no?
Right.
And where is that?
On the right side, the top two numbers added together is approximately cash and investment pool.
Okay.
Five point four plus two point five. And then the two numbers added together represent approximately four million. The same two lines on the left side. So that's how we got them eight to four.
Got you.
And that was spent?
That's how much was available at the end of each of those years.
That's available, available cash.
That's what the cash, yeah.
Okay, so we went from having eight available to having four available, where'd it go?
Well, that's, that, we're gonna continue through that, through that story as we go through to the other pages. Right? So the total net position is actually up.
Because that makes all the sense in the world to say you went from eight to four and then finished with the total.
So we can make some sense out of it. In that year, we did, we received nine million in the grant, so that nine million went into a fixed asset. And so the total net position, it didn't turn into cash, but it turned into our wastewater treatment asset. So that's, that's why we had about a approximately nine million dollar increase to the net position.
So our assets went up and our cash went down.
Exactly. Next page. We see the statement of revenues and expenses. You can see that in the right side, we had net operating income about midway through the page of three million. And this year, for FY sixteen, four seventy-six. That difference is largely due to the line that has to do with personnel, an increase of one point six million, and the depreciation. We, we have more depreciation as the wastewater treatment plant was put into service. So the depreciation has risen from one point two million to two point one million.
Does that make salary depreciation or standard?
Standard.
And the personnel benefits? Salaries were three point seven million, and the benefits were three point seven million?
Right, likely has something to do with picking up some pension liability that we had to pick up for that year. We had to pick up quite a bit of pension liability due to gas and sixty-eight.
Oh, here we go. So we're putting these numbers in here, making it all...
All right, let's, let's keep moving.
Okay, never mind, there you go.
All right. Statement of cash flows. This is really gonna contradict in some ways, and the actual cash flow shows that we had cash flow positive of four million dollars. That's what that's the issue.
I thought we had a net operating loss of three million dollars.
Well, this is, this is the overall statement of cash flows representing the four million. But this next page slide will show you a little bit better what's important, and that, this is, this is a slide that, that we developed that shows a good target for our capital accounts. So we have revolving of one point five million as a suggested target to maintain our infrastructure for water and sewer. We have impact of a suggested target of five hundred thousand, which is to expand the capacity, and the impact for sewer to expand its capacity at five hundred, so a total of two and a half million for those purposes. And you can see in each case, each one of those reserves are, the actual balances are in excess of our targets.
Right.
So that's good, but you can see the operating is substantially under its target.
So we have...
Yeah, we have capital funds.
We have, we have assets, but we have no cash.
We have no cash for operating.
That's an issue.
But we're putting those things in there, and has...
They've, they've...
The unrestricted balance is two point five million dollars of impact. I've done this, I've done this so many times.
On June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
That's right.
Is it, is it because that there is an unrealistic amount that you believe should be sitting in those accounts? Because for years, the previous city administrator was like, "You have to have that money in there, you have to have that money in there." And it sat in there for over a decade. Yet, the executive was told time and time again that this is losing money, this is losing money, this is losing money. So I said, "Well, if you're not gonna use that..."
Yeah, 'cause we made cut, we, we, this was cut three years in a row.
That's right.
So now we're paying the piper.
But you can't move it down into unrestricted or into cash, could you?
It, it is cash.
No, we're down at...
But it's seen here at a place where you can't get it, while two lines down, it says, "We don't have enough operating cash."
No, you got, you got two things here. The, the first unrestricted balance is June thirtieth, that's what we had in there, two point five million dollars. Now we're looking available, the next section.
That's the target, that's the, that's the minimum, the two point five, the target, that's our target.
Well, that's our target.
Yeah. And then below that is what's, is the number you were looking for. For sixteen, it was five total, for the, those three accounts. And the, and the bottom line shows the, the, the cash that's over the, the target for those capital accounts, the, under on operating.
In, in business terms, we're in solv, this is insolvent.
Yeah, but in real life, it doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, we have fifty-six thousand dollars in the, in the, in cash. And we need, we need, we need to build that back up.
Significantly. Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Statement of net position. This is a quick look at the entity-wide statement that, as you, as you may recall, is based on the full accrual versus modified accrual. And the one thing that stands out is that the unrestricted net position last year had a deficit of thirty point nine million. This year, that improved and declined to twenty-six point seven million.
So that's going in the right direction.
That went in the right direction.
Yeah.
Last page of the, of this section is showing the unfunded liabilities. We can see that the, um, that the overall improvement in the net position had much to do with that grant that was provided in the wastewater treatment plant. And that position was increased by nine million, that, that are overall increased by a lesser amount because of an offset by our increase in unfunded liabilities in OPEB and Apache. So that's why the net, the net position only changed from thirty point nine to twenty-six point seven. So that was a quick look at our financial statements for last year. Switching gears to the financial health that we've been working with for years in that same format.
Can I just summarize for the second?
Sure.
What it tells me is that two things we have to keep a real eye on. One is the surplus, and two is the, we have to take some action on the water and sewer to increase the solvency of the, is that safe?
It's safe, and we, we're gonna see now some of the action that we've, we've taken, proposed in response to it.
Great.
So switching gears to the financial health, we're gonna look at financial trends, some benchmarks, and look at the highlights of the FY eighteen budget.
Okay.
I've provided a slide for your review of the net assets.
Give us numbers, so that we can find the page.
Page three.
Could you?
Page three.
Go ahead.
Yep, at the, so this is, this is a good slide that lets you see for quite a few years the trend in unrestricted net, net assets, and for both governmental and for business. The next slide also gives you from two thousand eight to two thousand sixteen history for the general revenues and changes in net assets. The, the next page.
Hold on, just let me, let me a second.
Yeah.
Let's go back to page three, just so I can...
Okay, all right.
Just look at...
Okay, the next page has the general revenues and changes in net assets.
All right.
Shows, shows all the line items at a high level, so you can compare for year to year.
Wow.
What you looking at?
Sixteen, I'm looking at the total revenues in sixteen compared to fifteen. Okay.
Is that a good wow or a bang?
That was a good wow.
All right.
That was a good wow.
Well, but...
I hear wow.
Yeah, that's a good one.
The difference between sixteen and fifteen. That has wastewater treatment plant energy, that has...
For the business type.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm cool with that.
Okay.
Yep.
The next page is back to the fund balance, which we got a close look at that when we looked through the financial statements and saw that previous graph. This is, this is giving us a look at that seven and a half on the line of unassigned, and then it also shows the other categories of fund balance, and the total general fund. You can see it's pretty similar for a very long time, all the way back from two thousand and twelve. It's all hovered right in that twelve million dollar range. Very, very consistent.
Yep.
And, uh, so it's been very, the, the total fund, general fund balance has been very stable through that, throughout that entire period. Let me know when you're good to go to the next slide.
I'm good to go.
Okay.
What's this, what's this bar graph?
The bar graph is the same information that we saw where we can see the, the unassigned fund balance history over time. You can see it peaked in twelve, and then it's fallen back to that seven and a half in sixteen.
Okay.
Just showing the trend.
Yep.
And then the next slide has the changes in fund balance, and it's showing, again, a look at the revenues and expenditures. So it's like seeing all of your financial statements from two thousand and seven to two thousand and sixteen. Seeing, seeing that information.
Ooh, you went backwards to the other one.
Yeah, I, I just got nervous when I saw that.
When I saw the numbers going down.
I went to the wrong end, I went to the wrong end first, so, that's what I did.
And you can see the bottom line for two thousand and sixteen is at two seventy-eight, that we got a good close look. We looked at that in detail already when we were in that previous presentation. But that, if you want to spend some time in there, you can, you can kind of see for any department, history over, function, history over time. This graph kind of does the same thing. It's interesting, you can see that, as somebody suggested, public safeties as a component of the overall budget, you can see it's a dark brown there, and you can see it's, it's quite a bit bigger today than it was in two thousand and three.
Well, the, the amount of money available is almost double in thirteen years.
If it's hard to make that out, you might prefer to look at the screen in some color to see that. Grayscale doesn't do much for that.
It's about ninety percent of the, the lines, a big piece.
Big piece, and it's, and you can see proportionately, you know, it may, it may have grown a little faster.
Might have touched on that a few years, or a couple of years there.
Okay, so that was a quick review, where we put the financial information in, with, with historic information so to give it some more trend. So this is benchmarks. The first benchmark is the total fund balance. And you can see the, the general fund total, total fund balance has been hovering very near that twelve million. And compared to our revenue, it's thirty-two point four, which on scale is considered strong. The next slide is unassigned fund balance, and it's seven and a half million. And that compared to total revenue of thirty-eight, based on this scale, is still nineteen percent and strong. The debt-to-market slide is, yep.
I'm trying to figure out how this matches up with your slide from the financial overview.
It's, it's partly because this, this, this slide's been in here for a very long time, and it's a, it's, these benchmarks were inherited. I'd like to reevaluate them at the time, and I've, I've proposed those benchmarks in the other slide are more relevant than, than this guy. But this is, this has been the standard that's been used by the city for ten years.
But is this the geo-nice people who I like people?
Yeah, the GFOA minimum is three, minimum, keyword minimum is, was the bottom on the scale.
Right.
Was the six point four?
Yep.
Yeah, six point four.
That's the bottom, you don't wanna target, you don't want, you do not wanna target that.
Adequate and weak things on this particular slide, does it?
It's just 'cause I haven't ever written, you know, that, that rating that was here and being, being used, but...
Well, that reminds me of when they changed the level for second graders from SRI from four hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty, and they wanted, wondered why everybody's panicking. So which one's right? You.
Uh, yeah, no, 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 I, I like that middle, above, above the middle, above the middle bar, which is, which, which we saw was our target. I prefer, I prefer that one, to stay above that line.
This number concerns me. I don't know about anybody else, but it concerns me.
But the term for...
More than the number, the trend concerns me. But that's okay, that's only me.
Yeah. We're gonna have to spend less surplus over time for you.
Right, you're gonna have to. We're gonna have to be careful. We had, we had the luxury for a while of being very strong.
Well, but I, I also look back at the one thing, the big ticket item we did last year, which was the police communications issue. That was...
One time.
It was one time, but it was a significant amount of money that we were, using money that would have gone into surplus.
It was a transfer, it was a transfer internally.
I mean, you know, and that's, you know, a half a million dollars is a significant amount of money that you can put into surplus. So I, you know, and I, I think, you know, I got that in my mind, that we had that happen this year, and hopefully we won't have any, we won't see something like that.
Well, just for the sake of conversation, what is the amount, and I think I remember what it is, what is the amount taken out of surplus to be used in this budget?
We're gonna, we're gonna walk through that.
Yeah, no, because I think it's relevant to this picture and that picture from Thingard. Because if it's, if it changes from strong to adequate to weak, but we're not really looking at that one anymore, and I, and I, and I will say this to you because I adore you and respect you, but you're tight. You're real tight.
He's conservative.
No, you're conservative, he's tight.
But it's what's, it's also what's helped us get to our...
Double A ratings.
Yeah.
So my question is really, if, if it's seven point five now, are you gonna use two point eight, three point eight, one point six? Because in, in my lifetime of being involved with this, since God created John Pick and, and the rest of those people back in the nineties, you know, this is the slide that was always put up every time we were here. And there, we didn't necessarily have a internal services or a finance person that opined that maybe this isn't what we should use. And that's why I brought up the example of the school system, is when we change those things and everybody panics, I always say, "Well, what is the scientific reason you are changing the standard for what a second grade reader is?"
Yeah.
Do you hear the crickets? That's the answer that you get. So, because you're sitting here, I was hoping not to get the crickets answer, and if, what are we taking out of this slide?
And I guess maybe we, we got two parts here. So should we go to one formula, one thing that we need to have as a benchmark instead of having two things? Because we're looking at a couple of different things. What, in your expert opinion, should be a single, one benchmark that we should go by when it comes to this?
I definitely think the three-month target is a good target to strive for.
I would agree, I would agree with that.
That's the nine point seven. And we were above that, that, that line has moved up in the last year and two. And before that, that, we were, we were, like, two thousand and thirteen, we were right, right, very much near that line. And I put it back, I put that slide back up there so we can see. So now, this, this is the first year that, that has moved up now. So now, because the bar moved...
As we grow, it's gonna keep going.
It looked, it looks like historically we weren't there, but we were there.
Right.
In the real world, if I can describe it that way, what would have to happen? What would happen to us? What would have to be the catastrophic thing that happens to us? That the state wouldn't come in, or the FEMA wouldn't come in? What would have to be the catastrophic thing that happens to us that the state wouldn't come in or the FEMA wouldn't come in? I, I worry that because of your tightness and your.
Like a service, yeah.
No, I, 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 I think this G F O A stuff is, is almost, it's impossible margins for municipalities to make. And then you have to judge with citizens out there going, why do you have all this money? I mean, we heard the delegate last night, why have all this money? And you're not doing anything with it and it's because. I, I don't know how to say it, scared?
But let me differentiate between the county and, and us.
Oh, I didn't mean to bring that up.
I, I know, but what they're doing in this budget is putting, you know, many millions of dollars back in. They're, they're forward funding actually a bunch of projects and then putting money back into, it's, it's really odd. Into surplus and we're using some surplus to make projects happen. So, I mean, so I think we have about one point eight.
This, this budget that we're going to have, is that right?
No.
Two, two point one, but we're, we're considering that we, timing wise, we use three eighty-five from Lydia Phillips' lot sale. And so we, we targeted one eight and then we added the three eighty-five because we had to spend it in F Y eighteen instead of seventeen.
So we didn't spend it yet.
Yeah, so we had a target of about two point one. I mean, a, a.
So that would bring.
But you can see last year we targeted, it was two, three, something like that we started with and we ended up putting two hundred in. That does not mean that, that will repeat because there's a lot of moving parts. Suppose we don't get the healthcare rebate, there's a lot of what else there, so.
Suppose we don't get what?
The healthcare, we're gonna have a big bump we got at the end. Which we've gotten.
I just, if you came to me and said, we've got three months, nine point seven million dollars in there, you would say that you need to have that in there for the proverbial something. What is that something that would be so catastrophic that would not be picked up by, you know, the federal government because of a disaster? The, the, you know, I mean, the waste water treatment plant, the state says, go ahead, we know it's so bad for you down there, put it on the books on the other side. I'm just wishing for a middle ground between the sky is falling, heat, cordyry in every particular slide because there's not enough money in there. And a realization from what you present to us says, G O F A says this, G O F A says this. Your, your retirement people say you have to have all this money in there, which they know will never go in there, but they're saying it anyway and, and we're doing it reluctantly, smiling, me struggling and being pulled by the hair. But I, I just. On the outside, people ask the question. There's two, there's three questions you get. What's the ta- taxes going up and down, how much money do you have in surplus? And what are the projects you're funding? This is all wonderful stuff, but it is not necessarily conducive to discussing any of this outside this building. So. If you are saying that this is not relevant anymore, you don't even know where this came from, I don't even know what this, this has been around as long as I've been alive, this particular greater than and less than slide. Should we ask you to just take it out next year and not use it or use it based on this, on, on this?
We, we have an opportunity to, to better document our financial policies and I think it'd be an excellent opportunity between now and next year to, to incorporate. That'll only one sweep, cause I'm not authorized really to, 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 you know. Alone, I can recommend the financial policy, bring it to you and we'll have a great discussion about it and we'll, we'll hatch a new set that we're all good with.
And I only say keep because since my involvement here since nineteen ninety-five, since I was twenty-five years old, never one, no one has ever asked us to spend this kind of money on something.
Right, the only thing that I can point out is, is that, as I said before, the, the, I think targeting the three month range, if you go above it. Be, beware if you go up to the four month line and you got way too much at that point when you're going through. But the alarm should be going off as you see yourself headed towards the two month line. So it's like you can bounce around in between, but like already that trend line says aim, aim, aim upward. It's starting to say that to me.
But I think that's saying it to you because of your natural conservatism, I don't think that that's saying anything to you about the reality of what the, the city government does.
The bond market would say differently, they, one of the reasons we can afford.
Well, then let's do it that way next year. Let's say if the bond market says this is what you gotta have to have triple A, let's do that. But this, this is, this is, the sky is falling versus I can't tell you anytime anybody had to spend that kind of money.
That's a big precursor, I think, to these conversations in the future is that, that now we've, especially now that last year when we decided to go to the bond market. We, we suddenly kind of became subject to.
Right, these standards.
Their assessment of us. And, and there's always, there's always been some value in it, cause we still have to go to a bank and, you know, for, for a long time, we've gone to a bank and gotten borrowed money.
Credit worth, credit worth.
Credit, credit worthy, so they look at all this, but now it's kind of all out there and looking under the hood.
I don't, I don't look at this as, I don't look at this as desperation time. What I'm saying is if I'm a busi- if I'm, if I'm gonna give you money and I'm looking at it, even if you had a small jump this year in it. They're gonna go, okay, it, it, there's, there's gonna be a, there's a panic mode when you get down and it takes, it looks like this. And it's, it was up too much, that would be cau- you know, we'd have to be cautious, but I think that right now we just need to be careful. And I like that one up there, not this one. Okay, debt.
Okay, moving on, debt. The total debt, as you can see, this is citywide, has had a big jump from sixty-eight to eighty-two because of the wastewater treatment plant, which we have, as, as we all know, very favorable terms.
Keith, it's off the screen.
I'm sorry. Some reason it decided that I only do it when I'm in slide mode, so here we go, thank you. Went from sixty-eight to eighty-two due to the wastewater treatment plant. The market value of the property divided by that produces a ratio of three point nine nine, which on our scale is adequate. Next.
Not to open up a can of, but if it isn't, if this particular slide isn't appropriate for what we were talking about with surplus, is this particular slide appropriate for what we're talking about? Are these ratios appropriate for what we're talking about with debt?
Yeah.
And far be it, did I just say this out loud, what would G F?
Right, my, my, the way I would do it is break it down and I would only look at the governmental debt against our assessable property and then look at, look at the enterprise fund separately. I probably wouldn't look, I wouldn't, this has got apples and oranges in it and it's hard really to get a lot of information out of this. I don't think it tells us a whole lot.
It doesn't tell us anything else, from my.
It's just been here and so we can break from that.
The, the one thing that I think that you look at this, the first thing that hits me is our depreciation is gonna.
Good, it's growing.
It's growing rapidly.
Rapidly.
And, and when you consider that kind of number. What's that, fourteen, fourteen million? Do we depreciate the whole thing at the, at the close of the project or, or do we just take a percentage as we go?
Yeah, so you probably remember, recall, we had a, a presentation of how we put into service the old, the original wastewater treatment plant, half of it. And then we realized impairment loss on the other half.
Right.
So what you're seeing right now in the depreciation figure, that million is the first half.
Of the new.
That was benefiting us going forward, it's already in service. But once this new wastewater treatment plant is put in service, it's gonna hit again, but it's not even, it, it's all in, in construction in process at this time, all of the new, the new wastewater treatment plant. This is just the original half that's benefiting us going forward.
Holy smoke, okay. Wow.
For those of us outside who don't do this every day, the depreciation is gonna go on the books, eventually it comes off the books.
Yeah, after the life of the.
It's just amortized over the life of the asset. So it was about thirty million divided by forty.
So for the depreciation not to cause you panic, I've gotta wait how many years to go on?
I won't be here.
You don't, you don't wanna know. A very long time, like the wastewater treatment plant.
But in the end, it's one here because of G F A, the G F O A standards, but it really, where is the fiscal impact? Is it at the bond market? Where, where is it?
Well, you're gonna see on the expense line every year.
Well, yeah, I mean, every year this, these numbers are gonna go wild because of this stuff that's in there. It really doesn't mean a whole lot to the every day, I'm just trying to figure out when, I always looked at for me with the wastewater treatment plants, when do we stop bonding? When does the bonds, and when do we finish paying off the bond? Now I've gotta start worrying about the depreciation of the old one, correct, not the new one, the old one.
Now, the, the new.
The new one, you're gonna have to start recognizing. So now I get a law on getting in the.
It's one, it's one.
It will become one, yeah.
We will marry them.
Yeah, fortunately we don't have to like mothball a plant.
No, cause that's already been covered through the debt, the loss that you had before.
Well, in part of the construction, you know, it, it reuses a lot of that.
Which is, which is why.
What's that? I know.
And our grant covered really the portion that wasn't usable. All right, moving on to the debt per capita. We just used the same citywide debt of eighty-two million divided by the population and that gives us a twenty-five hundred and eleven debt per capita. Which is just, just a little bit above what is, puts us in the, a weak category there.
What's, and, I just want, I just, I just don't get. What is, what significance does this have? I mean, I.
Well, I guess, it's like, it's like, what's your capacity per person to, I mean, it's, it's, it's telling you what each, each.
Does the bond market look at that?
I have no idea.
Because we don't, I mean, I don't know, okay.
Okay, the annual debt service is two point nine million as a ratio of the budget of thirty-eight, that's seven point six two, which is considered to be adequate.
And we have a little bit of a.
Have a little room to go there.
Okay.
The water sewer unrestricted balance is, as we saw, fell to a deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand. The, the operating revenue of sixteen million produces a ratio that's negative, which is obviously something we all already recognize needs improvement. The parking authority has an unrestricted net position of eighty thousand divided by revenue of seven fifty-six equals ten percent. It's improvement over. Let's see, so it's improvement over last year, but still needs improvement, has needed improvement for the, in the last four years as you can see. Then we have the benchmark summary on the next slide. Following slide has the budget highlights, just gonna do a quick run through, so.
So basically, everything that was good on this sheet actually gets knocked down by G O F A. And, and the rest of it, then it becomes. I mean, am I correct, the first two, which are where all our strengths are, are the ones where G F O A is going to say, we're not strong and you're gonna change the standard. We'll keep the standard and all the rest of them, the rest of it's adequate and needs improvement.
Pretty much.
It's a good thing you weren't a teacher, Keith.
Okay, so, so we're good to go to the budget highlights? All right, so personnel wise, this is the quick summary, we had, we had a step, we have some reclassifications that I'll show you on the next page. We had reorganization changes that resulted in new allocations and transfers. We have a new pay plan for the police, we proposed a life insurance benefit ra- ra- raised from ten thousand to twenty thousand. Fire department had forty-seven thousand promotions, had merit increases of twelve, had new civilian position of fifty-six and a fire marshal reclass of estimated ten. So jumping to the next page, wasn't gonna go through all these unless you want me to, I was just gonna, I just listed for you all the reclassifications and the accounts that they, they're in. The next page has new positions. At the top, you can see that since when we created the budget, that budget amendment had been processed for seventeen, so we had to add those four new firefighters to the F Y eighteen budget. That had a cost of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, so that's at the top of the list.
So we didn't add them yet? You didn't add them yet?
When the budget was created, the amendment hadn't been processed yet, so the budget didn't, the initial, the initial budget didn't include it, but it does now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all these, all of these are reflected in the budget, everything you see here.
Okay.
So new positions, any questions? See those, you can see.
Is the, um, definitely see the reclass here?
Ah, yes.
It is, under new?
Uh, no, uh, under reclass, I believe. It should appear under reclass. And it will.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Is it in there?
No, it's a reclass of the executive administrative assistant.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah, I don't see it on this P E.
Okay. Although it didn't change financially from this year to next, I mean, it's still the same. Bracket, they'll come in at a higher level, but it's still included in the same.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, I mean the extra one that we talked about previously.
Oh, no, it's not included, it's not included.
Do we have a, a, how much that is thought to be?
We can provide it.
The extra one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good that, um.
If we're.
I, I know you all.
In past times, and believe me, this is the eighteenth council that I've somehow gotten these books and things from, some. Usually there's a list over here, people usually have a, a slide that says, these are some of the things that we'd like to put back in.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, what we do is when we go over.
He'll be tracking that.
Yeah, we'll be tracking.
He'll bring that number in.
That's why I asked this morning about the other. Yeah, okay.
Julie and Jean to provide that.
So this, you can see that we did, it includes freezing of the four officers and we traded, in addition to that, we traded one police officer for the two cadets.
The two cadets.
That's reflected there too. And then there was some, just listing that we had some transfers and we had some positions that were eliminated in the reorder. You can see the county P and Z budget was eliminated of a hundred and sixty-three because we added a new planner position. So that was a big change. Everybody good with personnel, move on, move on, okay? There's some rate, uh, rate changes, the trash service was, is at a proposed rate of thirty-six, up from nineteen twenty-five. It has an annual increase of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand over what, what the rate is today.
Everyone will remember, I'm sure that was included in last year's budget, but it didn't somehow make it in the budget.
And that was due to tipping fees?
Uh, everything, it just doesn't pay for itself.
I, I'd like to show you two slides that'll help, uh, this is, this is.
Can we go back to the budget highlights first?
Sure.
So the fifteen percent that we, that was in the, in the.
No, we'll, we'll come back to each one of those lines if you.
No, I was just saying, the fifteen percent that was in, is here underwater and sewer and then trash. So does that mean on the water bill, the water sewer's going up fifteen percent and the trash is gonna go up double?
Yes.
I mean, it's still gonna be once a week?
Once a quarter, oh, you mean the trash service.
No, you mean, you mean it's trash service, yeah. So last year when we did the review of fees, there were two services that we provide that don't pay for themselves. It's trash and the landlord licensing and rental unit registration. And we tried to correct that, although we still haven't completely corrected it. Private sector charge is about sixty, sixty dollars a month for trash service. We're still gonna be around twelve dollars a month.
I'm just, I. Nevermind, I'm doing my bill in my head, nevermind, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Ju- ju- just to walk you through a, a couple of slides that'll help understand the trash service, the, we looked at twenty-five sixty-five and you can see at that, at that price, that's the first column. The dark is how much cost is not recovered and you can see that's about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we're not recovering in cost. At twenty, at thirty-one seventy-six, we're, we're not recovering about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. At thirty-six, we're not recovering about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in cost in the dark here. At thirty-nine dollars, we'd be about breaking even pretty close, that's what that's showing us.
And that's a quarter.
And I guess maybe.
That's, that's what I'm saying, per year, per year, that to break even right now, you need a bill of approximately thirty-nine dollars a quarter, yeah.
Just for the trash, you know, and, and I guess maybe, you know, and like Jim, so I was sitting here calculating my bill and I'm thinking, you know, I've got. I've got. Single mom with three kids across the street, I got. Guy across the street that I know, you know, is struggling with work and I got an elderly lady over here raising her grandkids. So, you know, I, I mean, between the two, this is a significant quarterly. Punch for people because the, the bills are quarter. And, uh, I, I don't, I, I don't know if, and I think we briefly, we talked about this, I think it might have been at an agenda meeting. Uh, it, is there a way for, for the bills? And I don't know if we're getting into the weeds here, if this is appropriate for it.
You're not getting into the weeds.
We, we mentioned before, but is there a way to go to a monthly bill? For this, for people, because I, I think most people. Budget monthly and, you know, when you're, when you're looking at taking someone whose bill may be, you know. A hundred to a hundred and twenty, depending on the family, now we're adding in.
Seventeen dollars.
Another seventeen bucks. Plus another fifty, you know, we're talking, you know, now we're jumping their bill up, you know, sixty, seventy dollars, maybe more. Uh, for people, uh, I mean, this is.
For the low end user?
This, this is significant because, you know, if we look at, you know, and I know, and I don't wanna jump ahead to, you know, hey, we're lo- we're lowering. Homeowner property taxes, but the people that it's gonna affect the most are the people who are not gonna see any benefit from. The property tax reduction. Uh, so, I, I think this is something, is there a way that we can?
What did I text?
And I know, and I know that this is, this is years of catching up and now we're trying to correct it all in one.
I don't think it even corrects it though.
Look, it doesn't, but we're trying to, and this is a big chunk, I mean, if we really did correct it. We're probably looking at a hundred dollar increase minimum per bill, per quarter.
Yeah, in a year, oh, you mean if we did it all, yeah, cuz I think Jim's right that it's about thirty, thirty-two.
For the, for the low end user, about thirty-two dollars a quarter.
Yeah, and then if you've got, but that's, that's a. That's, uh, you know, an elderly lady living alone, we're not talking about a family, um. You did say after lunch, we would get a little goofy, but that doesn't include a, a family of five. You know, where you got three kids and everybody taking a bath every day and washing a load or two of clothes every day. You know, it's, that could be significant.
Does this put into account the commodity charge that's in back in the fee? Or what was emailed to us today, because the commodity charge also went up as well for gallons.
The, the to- right, the total, the total charge in, you know, or the total change is fifteen percent. But it's applied over a variety of charges, yeah, so the, the net additional revenue is fifteen percent. The, um.
Not including the trash. Now, if you look at, just look at the trash rates, it's worth, it's worth noting that, see that, um, Delmar, Fruitland, Princess Anne, Dover. Georgetown, Melford, they're all above us.
Well, Dover, Georgetown, Melford and Delaware, and they have nothing in the way of property taxes, so. That, to me, what, what, what we talked about years ago and always, in trying to measure. If something's gotta go up, you know.
I, I guess what I could do though is just the, the fundamental idea, if you're gonna charge somebody for the service and not just. Use property taxes to pay for it, you're saying, I'm gonna charge you for a service. And right now, we're just subsidizing it with property taxes. We could either not charge for it and just pick up people's trash and make it part of.
Well, I, I think the, the, the only thing that strikes me is that, m- maybe I'm making a wrong assumption, but everybody has trash service. So there is an argument that says you could provide that under the tax thing. Or subsidize it. That's, that's just my, cuz everybody, it's not like some people, you have no control, everybody has to have their trash picked up cuz it's a health and safety issue. But everybody doesn't have to use water excessively or not, or conserve.
But that's, that's telling you it's not common that people subsidize it, in other words, that's what that's telling you.
Yeah, but that doesn't make it right.
Alright, I got you.
In, in my mind, I, I hear what, I mean, I live in a senior citizen. And I know that a good portion of them are on fixed income.
Fixed incomes in the county.
And, and that's tough, you know.
And even the woman with the four or five children is tough.
It's a big, it, it is big.
And especially where economy is around here, jobs and stuff.
It's a tough one.
Well, I also think about those new developments coming online because we just gave the developer the break to build them. And we'll collect more in property taxes because they are new properties. And then we'll turn around, it's always, it's funny when you knock door to door throughout the city. You know, I know what I pay in property taxes and then you go to some of the P R Ds and stuff like that and I'm like. You know, out, out Pepperton Drive, you, you're like, wow. You know. So those people are gonna. They'll buy a new house, they're not gonna necessarily reap the benefit of the, the cost savings that we gave the developer. They'll pay the highest rate in taxes cuz it's new construction, it's new build and then this will.
Well, they won't pay a higher rate than taxes.
I mean, they'll pay it, but their property will be worth more.
On the outset, probably. Yeah, they will pay the lower rate in taxes. But, yes.
We'll all pay the same rate. Yeah, but we will. But theirs will be based on what the assessment is, as it's brand new. And then I'll get this.
I'd like to say more about this one.
But, yeah, but the, the, um, and the idea of, remember that the idea of the, uh. Yeah, incentives to develop is not just to pass it on, it's to create the development in the city rather than in the suburbs. You know, and in Sussex County or Worcester County or wherever.
Now, they have, what, urban, they have utility districts though, right, how do they pay?
Who?
In Delaware, that's all part of.
They have, um, so they have various, yes, various public service utility like.
Well, they even have, like, each town has their own school district too, so it's a whole.
School district taxes, and then, uh, their big tax is their transfer tax, so anytime you buy or sell this property, that's where you really get hit.
Do we know the, um, average, uh, impact dollar wise is for water and sewer?
Scary, eh?
We, I was just gonna say, do we have this, these same two slides for water and sewer as well?
And let, and let me share one other thing, we did look at privatization of, uh, sanitation.
And that was my, that was my, my list.
It'll, it'll cost between sixty and eighty dollars a month to each property, each homeowner, each resident. Uh, and now, it, it might be good for the city, cuz we'll stop losing money, they'll pay us. Uh, and they'll buy all our trucks from us, so it'd be good for the city government operationally, but it would hurt all our residents.
Can we, could, is it possible, just as a, as a, because of the, the amount? Is it possible we could do this in steps, do, and do part of it with the tax?
It's, it's, that's really up to you, yeah, I mean, that's, uh, something for a conversation.
The other thing I was, I was thinking about is if we did it, if we.
But you know what?
I mean, if we have, if we know where we need to go and if, and if at some point we can step it a little over a three or four year period.
The problem is though, that if you put it on property type, you get the same issue cuz the same people are having trouble with the.
Paying the bill, this water bill.
It's not really gonna help, I don't think, or is it? Am I missing something?
I, I mean, if it's still separated on the bill.
One hand, left hand, right hand.
I would, to be honest with you, I, in the broad, looking at this budget over fifty thousand feet. I would rather not have my property taxes dropped and have this be, this, I, I know it's apples to oranges. But I, I would rather have this be a little less of an impact. Because to be perfectly honest with you, my property taxes are gonna come out of my mortgage payment, this comes out of my checkbook. I mean, I, I know it sounds like I should be doing it differently, but when you pour, this money's in here and this money's in here.
So you and I agree.
This is twice.
This is scary.
Yes, it is.
Stop the pizza, no more pizza.
I would encourage us to think about this.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I need time to let it.
I, I would say that, I would say that the total amount of, of revenue foregone. By dropping homeowner property taxes is not that significant, um, in total, it, it is significant, Keith just had a heart attack. Uh, it is significant, um, but.
Does it make up this?
I, no, I mean, it's, no, 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 it's more than that, um, but I, I think if we look at, uh. You know, a penny here and what that does versus, versus ten dollars on your, or five dollars on your, um, trash fee, you know, we. I think, you know, a couple options could be laid out, right?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I just know, just from when I, when, when, when I saw that and, you know, the, the tax, you know, and I, and I did the calculation in my head. Uh, I'm still not, I'm not gonna wash out, I'm not, my, my taxes aren't gonna go down that much. I mean, it might be.
Yeah.
It's thirty, forty dollars.
And I'll be honest, it's, it's not gonna change on my mortgage statement because my escrow is gonna keep it anyway.
Yeah, I, I won't, yeah.
Not good change.
Yeah, it, it'll.
The escrow amount, there, it, it's gonna, there'll, there'll be, there'll be forty, forty dollars more in my escrow account and they'll go, well, we'll just keep this right here.
But there's a couple principles achieved there, one is, one is, look at what's happening to your county taxes. Versus, look at what's happening to your city taxes, look at what you're getting for your city taxes versus look at what you're getting for your county taxes.
That's a valid point.
Start to, start to say, you know, we're gonna, we're going to incentivize homeownership, you know, like we've said is a principle of, of our city. We're gonna try to make it easier for people to buy, or to make the decision to buy in solar, cuz it's already cheaper to buy than it is to rent in Salisbury anyway.
Yeah, that's standard anywhere, I mean, unless you're, you know.
Yeah, but it's, but it's.
Might be more pronounced.
People are hesitant, people are hesitant to invest and it's a pretty small percentage of people that, you know. So I think it's disappointing for that.
It would be interesting to me to find out what the comparison would be for the cost of this going up. And the cost of the septic system upgrade for people are, are, it has, it has to be more expensive to do that.
Twenty thousand dollars or more.
And depends on what, I mean.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Could we, could we, like, sort of put this on the side for, uh.
Yeah.
You want, do you want us to break down like what, um, each dollar of charge is equal to?
Yeah, that would be good, it also has the water and sewer rates, dollar impact. And then we can, we can see what, having all those pieces of data will make it a little bit easier.
Break all three of those things down for us.
Yeah, that's great, okay.
And moving on, uh, fire marshal review fees, we have a, a new, uh, revenue of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Sprinkler permits and fees that relate, relate to the new fire mar- uh, fire, uh, inspection program. Is twenty-three thousand, change in occupancy fees, uh, estimated new revenue of two thousand. Change in use fees, uh, estimated revenue of two thousand, vacant registration fee was raised from twenty-five to two hundred. Historic application is a new fee of twenty-five dollars, uh, water and sewer rates fifteen percent, uh, that has a, has a revenue. Uh, of about one point six million, by the way, that, uh, the change to operate the, uh, wastewater treatment plant. The new, the new plant coincidentally is, uh, in chemicals and in labor, exactly one point six million. So all this increase does is recover the new cost, it doesn't take us forward into building this cash. I mean, if you looked at the, we're getting a rate study done and I, I feel certain we'll be thirty percent or above before it's all not meaning of an increase.
It's chemicals, electric and labor.
Third, one point six.
As well.
Yep. So that alone in this budget increased by one point six and this, this, this increase only captures, uh, recovery of those costs.
Is it time to look again at, uh, solar for the prime purpose of running the plant?
We absolutely want to, um, it's not, um, Richard Anderson when he does the assessment. Um, it's more, uh, we save more by buying.
Do you?
Power from the open markets.
What about a combination? Cuz it just doesn't generate enough.
Costs more money right now, now, two years ago, it was advantageous to build solar and then, you know, it's. They've, they've passed on it.
Okay.
I, it, I would guess it's gonna be back, I would guess it's gonna come back.
I mean, I guess maybe is it, is it.
Delmar Power's not cutting rates.
Well, but I meant, i- if you're, when you're using solar, is this us purchasing the equipment? That it's our equipment and it's not into a supplier who puts it up and then sells us the electricity that's generated from the. Solar on our property?
No.
Or is it, is it us owning the equipment?
No, we don't own the equipment, it's, uh, all power purchase agreements.
Cuz I, I looked into it too for my house and it just didn't really make any sense to, you know, have somebody put it on my roof and then.
But if we do it ourselves, then we've got all the debt associated with.
And you also have the, you also have the maintenance and upkeep and these, the panels, even at the best panels.
I haven't even heard of anyone considering that.
Fifteen years or something?
Fifteen years, fifteen to eighteen years.
So, Mayor, you, you know, we're talking about the electricity costs out there at the new wastewater treatment, that's what.
That's what this was.
So this, that isn't even factored into this, is it paying for itself, is it?
So that's what Keith just said, that the one point six million, uh, increase in water and sewer rates would. Just matches what the anticipated cost of chemicals, electricity and labor.
And did we ask how long they would be running together and when it would slowly slide off with the other?
We, you just, we were talking about electricity, haven't got that for.
It, it is true that some of that might, uh, is due to the parallel in this, in this budget. Cuz there's, there's gonna be both plants running this year, but they also don't have a solid, uh, understanding of exactly what it's gonna cost to run that plant. They have some ideas, but they don't, until they experience it, you know, it's not, it's not, uh, it's not rock solid.
Reminds me of a conversation we had about five years ago where you said, the goalpost was here, you kicked the field goal. And then in the middle of the ball in the air, they moved another twenty yards, uh, it, it's still in that. The field goal's still moving, you know, it's.
I mean, it's been evaluated by years, you know, that's all input to, uh, budget with, how the course is budgeted.
See, that's where I'm moving on using something for both of them. It's a one time, we gotta get over this, I'll put both of them on at the same time, it's when, like, you get up, it's coming back. And I did it on both sides of the table and that, you know, it's coming back over and over and over again for, for stuff.
But, but you saw that the net unrestricted was a deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand, so you, there is no surplus in water and sewer.
See, and I, and, and again, I don't agree, you shouldn't be able to move it anywhere you wanted it in there, but those are your, your rules, so.
So it's, it's, so you can't take the, anything from surplus in the general fund to the water and sewer. Is there a possibility that we could loan the money from surplus? And then as things go over a period of time, water and sewer eventually, basically loan self, loan money to ourselves. Instead of to a bank, that's, you know, one.
One, one possibility, if, if money was getting moved from one pile to another, would have been out of those capacity fees. It is within council's power to, uh, to, to, uh, legislate. To remove some of those capacity funds, uh, in, into operating, but.
Yeah, so, so, so long as it's sustainable, we don't wanna just take the money we have, save it over here, move it over here.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm saying it's, you do it as a loan from the general fund.
Or a loan from a.
But we pay it, it, it as, I don't know, if, if you understand.
I get the impression if we don't address it here or somewhere in here, then what's gonna happen is Mike Moles is gonna come to the mayor at some point and say. Well, both of them have been running for three days and we're now six million dollars over the electrical cost that we budgeted for. And then he's gonna have to come here and therein lies, well, now that just completely destroys my argument about G F O A.
I let you go cuz I knew where you were gonna end up.
Uh, alright, maybe not six million, but, you know, I mean, I think that happens eventually. So we just have, do you know, do we have any idea when those two things, when the switch will be clicked?
It'll be between September and December.
But there's gonna be dual, you're gonna run simultaneous for a while, for a while, cuz you're not just gonna flip a switch, that would be like.
Well, it's, it's actually, so, in the next couple of months, they're actually, they start and they start, you know, moving through the new pipes.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think they're gonna test a couple.
I would like to go.
Slowly building.
That'd be fun.
Maybe we do a road trip. We do a road trip. We do a road trip.
Should we hit a bus?
We just have these as walking, western, walking sessions.
We're getting punchy, let's move on.
So, uh, in the fee schedule, you'll see some parking uh fees, fines are proposed to go into effect. Mostly in January. So they, uh Jennifer felt like that would be the appropriate time for those to go into effect. Of course, you, you all have seen that we have a new uh fee schedule yet.
Yeah.
So, uh moving on, I'm on uh slide twenty-three. And you have the real property taxes, upper left, that owner occupied, uh proposed to go to ninety cents. Non-owner occupied to a dollar six. Uh the estimated revenue related to the combination of those two things is one point six million. Personal property, the railroads going up from two twenty-one to two thirty-three. The O B C and other personal properties down to two dollars. That's a, almost a two, a ten percent uh reduction in personal property taxes.
Can I ask this question? And really, this is from the mayor, just.
Yeah.
Because I made this, I had to go and make this little diagram where arrows went up and arrows went down, arrows went down, so. Personal property, property taxes for homeowners went down, property taxes for rentals went up. Property taxes on personal property went down, commercial real estate taxes.
Well, is this the railroad?
That, commercial real estate taxes is in non-owner occupied.
Okay.
Um so personal property taxes is like on business equipment, you know, manufacturing equipment, printers, cars, if you're a car dealership. You know.
All right, so. All right.
So on utilities, like railroads, it went up.
Was there some particular reason, I, I understand the, the two property taxes on the.
On the left.
On the, on the houses.
Uh and on the right.
The homeowners and the rentals.
Right.
Was there some compelling reason that the personal property tax needed to go down?
Yes, so, so it's actually something we've been uh hearing for a long time. Um that our personal property taxes are out of sync with other parts of the state. Um rising at too rapidly a rate, so three years ago, um I, I think it was three years ago, we split the. And it, I think it was the first year we were allowed to split.
Right.
Right. Is, is that, to decouple, or maybe not the first year, but had just become allowed. So we decoupled those two, so they weren't rising together necessarily, um though they were, uh they didn't have to. And so this is the first uh effort to actually say, well, we wanna bring, you know, those. Those personal property taxes on businesses down to a more, you know, level rate, but we do want. But we don't necessarily wanna offer the same benefit to utilities.
Okay. Do we know how much each one of these things is costing us or raising us?
Yeah, the bottom, the third bullet on each, each side, est- estimated revenue increase, one point six million dollars on the real property side. Estimated revenue decrease, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the personal property side.
So on the real property taxes, if we left the rate the same. What would be the number? If we didn't change either one and left it the same?
One point six million dollars.
So it's a revenue neutral. No, I'm saying if we didn't, if we didn't lower the homeowner property rates and we didn't raise to non-owner occupied.
One point six.
So if that's the same, the same amount of money is gonna come.
No, we would lose.
We would lose one point six million.
Be zero.
Yeah, yeah, actually, if we leave the rate, if we leave the rate, if we, if we leave the rate the same as it is now, point nine four three two. The assessments that did rise would give us a very small increase of like a hundred and some thousand. So a hundred of that thousand, we'd have a hundred thousand versus one point six.
But that's in relation to the budget it is, as it has been presented. With the budget, the way it's presented, that's what you would lose.
That one point six is there.
If you kept everything the same, correct?
Right, that's true.
All right, so there's, so there's. If, if our budget came in at the exact same amount it was last year, that number wouldn't be a loss of one point six million dollars.
No, 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 I, I was answering Mira's question, which is, if, if you kept it the same as last year, there would be one point six million dollars less in revenue. It would be a loss of one point six million dollars to our budget that's been presented to you.
Well, then I'm trying to figure out where the justification is for dropping. The homeowner. Property tax.
Well, I, I think we said earlier it was to incentivize homeownership.
What is one dollar on the tax rate?
Real property taxes are going up one point six million dollars with no change, right?
Say it one more time?
No, no.
One point, the revenue from property taxes is gonna be higher than it was last year.
No.
As presented?
By one point six million dollars.
And, and, and let's not say as presented as if that, there's like option, you know, as far as what's presented, there's, this is the budget. You know, that's, and, and, you know, if we change it.
Well, I mean, if, what I was asking was if, is if we didn't change the rate, Keith was saying we had about a hundred thousand dollar increase.
But if you, that was just.
Which is a one point five million dollar loss.
Still correct, it would be one point six loss.
And you'd have to find a one point five million dollars worth of.
So, I, I guess maybe the question is.
Over last year.
The revenue versus last year. Because, i- is this because of assessments have, have gone down?
Because it says the assessment went up. So how would it be a one point six million dollar loss? If you kept it the same?
No, well, assessments are based on what the state values the property, which is.
Understand the confusion.
No, it's not.
It's a one point six million dollar. Yeah.
It's, you're in, you're raising taxes one point six million dollars.
No.
No, it's staying the same, you're just getting more revenue.
Raising revenue, one point six million dollars, right?
Well, how are you raising revenue?
Because the, the assessable base went up.
No.
No, because the non-owner occupied.
Yes.
Version of commercial property and rental properties were raising that rate to one point zero six.
That's exactly right.
So how much more, all right, so you'd have one point six more million dollars if you kept the homeowner rate exactly the same?
Nope, we'd lose one point six million dollars.
I don't understand how you can say that. I'm saying, don't lower the rate for, what would it be if you didn't lower the rate for, for homeowner occupied? How much more money would you have?
You mean left it at a dollar six or left it at point ninety-four thirty-two?
Whatever it is ninety-four thirty-two, how much more money would you have?
I have that figure. I'm disconnected from my database right now, so I can get it.
We just went through that whole thing and we got your disconnected.
But I say, if you, I would say that if you do that.
Be connected.
I would, I would, I would say that if you do that, I would encourage you to reduce all of the increase to others.
Hold on, all right, hold on, hold on, say it one more time.
If you're gonna get rid of the, the decrease, then get rid of.
I'm not, I'm not saying to get rid of the decrease. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how much money. There's, the difficulty in your budget is, is not how well it's put together. It's that there's a lot of stuff went up here and a lot of stuff goes down there and then it goes down here, but this goes up over here, but there's some projects over here and I guess. That's, it's, it's not the usual one of three budgets. Hallowedly appraised Lord, two thousand and five, Mrs. Tillman has four point five more million dollars to deal with. It's not mine, Mr. Pick, you have uh seven hundred eighty thousand, that was less than you had last year. It has these, it has these many moving parts and that's very difficult to wrap your head around.
It is, it is a first attempt at, at beginning to change uh the tax rate to. Model our values and things that we say are important.
Right.
Yeah, so you're right, so that's a big change. And this is, this is the point where it really dramatically shifts from other. This page is where it really shifts. Um so, you can, you can leave it. I, what I would suggest is, and, and I don't suggest this because I, I think we should do exactly what's proposed. Because I think.
Cause that's what you proposed.
Well, I proposed it for a reason, right? Um but uh you could leave them the same, you could leave them parallel. And you could choose to increase all taxes um on everyone or keep them flat on everyone uh as far as real property goes. Uh I'm ignoring for a second the personal property question, but I wouldn't suggest um going down the, the path of split rate. And increasing both. See what I'm saying? If you're gonna split rate and we're going to say, hey, as a city, we have said for, over and over and over again, that we wanna incentivize homeownership. Then I think you gotta decrease the homeownership.
For them, not exactly, I don't, I, I, the only reason I say that is that it's increased homeownership and, and. Too bad Hardy's not here to turn around and give me the look like he normally would. In the older neighborhoods, the amount, the difference in ninety-four, point nine four three two and point nine oh. Is, is negligible.
Yeah, y- year one, not, well, not negligible, but small, year one, sure, but.
And it's not going to be, it's gonna be in your, in your mortgage payment.
Right, your mortgage payment would get down.
Quantified, it's about a, a hundred and thirty-two thousand is the reduction, the difference between ninety-four three two and ninety cents to the city.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, then I, then I'm not sure if that makes the case for it being all that important or not all that important at all.
Let's look at the difference between ninety cents and a dollar six, uh, that's a big spread.
What's the dollar six? That's now on homeowner occupied.
Right, that's, that's the real spread. It went, one went down, one went up.
See, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the bottom line that's the, the difference maker. It's what, it's the fact that to each single person out there that, who's bought a house in the city or is considering it can say, oh, okay. You know, they're, they're trying to make things easier for me to make the choice to be here.
Or stay.
And, and, or stay, and, you know, in a, in an environment where we still have people repeatedly saying, oh, I pay double taxes. I pay double taxes and the, the tax rate that most of those people are looking at and that they're concerned about is not their county taxes. Not that that makes it right, it's that there's a, there's an old historical misperception that city taxes are on top of. And thus superfluous.
See, it's funny because in my mind, when I think about the two bills, the property taxes and the water and sewer bills. It's actually the water and sewer bills that, that actually have more consternation for me and that's the one that's going up. And the one that I really don't worry about all that because I pay, I don't know, Keith, you know, you get the bill, nine hundred here, a thousand there. For the other one, whatever.
The, though, I'll tell you, and you know, in the grocery store, there are people who might ask about the water and sewer, but most people talk about their taxes. And, and I think both are an issue. The question is, the, you know, the only reason that there's any consideration for increasing water and sewer. Is just because of the, the issue that we have there in, in not paying for itself. So, I think there's, and I think we could be more gentle with the water and sewer increases, just that it's gonna be tough. From a bottom line standpoint.
Can we, I'm gonna say this out loud and I'm sure Greg Bass is watching, but let's look at it from the perspective of the property owner. Of a, of a rental. If you're going up, what did you estimate it is? It's a twelve point three?
About a twelve percent.
Increase in, in property taxes.
And understand that that's not just rentals, that's rentals and commercial property.
Right. And then the, the water, it is going up. You know, significantly.
Percent, yeah, plus, then, then now, you know, we're looking at the trash bill. So you're, you're talking to, to. Ultimately, the individuals that it's gonna affect the most.
Other matters.
Because all the way through, all the costs are gonna be passed on to those who, well.
I disagree with that.
Well, I mean, I, I, I would say, if, if you are, whatever business you're in, whether you're a landlord, whether you're a business.
And what we can do for you is we can, we can give you a list of, you know, uh how many of those are owned outright, how many are mortgaged. What you'll see is that, and how many are multifamily, you know.
Well, I mean, regardless, regardless of whether the property is mortgaged or not, the thing of it is, is if, if, if you're a landlord and it's a business. You still have, when to run your business, any business has a margin. That to sustain their business, they need.
We know their margin's pretty good right now.
Well, but, you know, I mean, you, you know, I, I don't, I think it goes beyond that regardless, when you look at it at the nuts and bolts, you got maintenance, you got, you know. Appliances in the property, if you provide it, you've got, you know, there, there's, there's a whole host of things that go to. You, you know, I have, I have, you know, a stepdad, a landlord, you know, I got friends that are, and I know that, you know. Uh one friend of mine, he says he keeps fifteen thousand dollars in the bank for his properties, just in case. Because if he has to replace an A C unit, that's eight thousand dollars. If he's gotta put a new roof on a, on a house. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things that go with that, just because they have a profit margin, you still gotta have that money set aside for the properties. Now, all those costs get passed on to the monthly rent.
Except that's not, that's not purely how anyone sets their rents.
No, but.
The mark, the market is not gonna bear increases in rents dramatically based on one move. I mean, there's still going to be much greater influencing factors on, on the setting of rents.
There are, you know, there are landlords who will eat it. There, there are some good landlords who eat it, but there's also those out there that will say. Oh, okay, taxes are going up, so I'm gonna raise the rent twelve percent. But, I mean, that's gonna happen and.
But when you, when you do that, there's an offset. And the offset is, for a lot of people who are starting to look at it right now, wait a minute. If I'm paying this much rent, then maybe I can get some assistance and I can buy a house.
Yeah.
Which is what we want them to do.
Then we go to the available housing stock in the city.
Five percent homeowner, if, if, there's, the people who are renting and who are paying do not have the credit, they do not have the down payment. They don't have any of that stuff there.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a slow process.
We're gonna make people um, um. Reevaluate, reevaluate their credit and everything else so to make you start thinking about going towards homeownership.
And as the economy gets better, it's gonna help.
Sometimes takes years.
They are ready to get down with their credit and get their credit straight because they wanna be homeowners. They're tired of renting because the rent is so high and then they're opposing like the water and sewer bills on them now. A lot of people, a lot of renters are paying that water and sewer bill now. So that's a bit much, you know, especially if you're paying eight, some of them are paying eight, nine hundred dollars to rent. So, yeah, I wouldn't.
And the more frequent trend for people is to choose to shift from renting to homeownership. And I think that's when it really becomes stark, you know, when you look at, wait, I gotta pay taxes too? Um, you know, I gotta pay property taxes, what does that look like? And then you start looking at uh county versus city, or you start looking at neighboring counties, or you start looking at Delaware. And I think that's why, while we've seen the population growth here, you know, we're, we're looking at um seventy-five percent homeownership. In the county, but twenty-five percent homeownership in the city, partly because that thing is a, is a gut punch when you look at this idea of. Oh, I gotta, all of a sudden, I gotta, I gotta maintain the property, I gotta, you know, deal with, I gotta pay ta- a tax bill. So I, I think, I think if we can get ourselves onto the path of separating those two things. You know, and, and recognizing that one is a business and, you know, one is purely owning and, and living in your home. Investing in your home and looking at them as two very different things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I just, uh. It's just a, it's just like a double whammy this year, well, actually, it's a triple whammy, when you, when you count the, the trash picked up.
I, I think what we need to do is, we need to get the data that we requested and I think we should revisit this when we get into the end. Because we're not gonna resolve this now, there are too many variables. But um, how, all right, let's, let's.
Okay.
Let's keep going and wrap this up.
Pretty quick from here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the uh top increases of revenues, uh about two million in the real props and, and, and property taxes. Fire protection, we have four hundred and seventy thousand in new revenues. We also have some stipends that we have to pay out now that come through the city, so that has to come out of that, four seventy that's new. Uh the trash fees of three, uh that we've talked about, that's the incremental uh difference in this year and last year. The fire prevention plan review we saw and the local income taxes estimate increased. Personal property taxes, we had a reduction of three-ten in the budget, school, school zone camera fees really uh plummeted this year.
Finally slowed down.
It's slowing down, so.
We can always reposition them.
I hope that I have another bill my wife will.
Last year we had a, a donation that we're not getting this year, we had agreed with the, one of the volunteers. Uh to provide one year uh of payments for a ladder truck. And then uh, uh just chewing up our false alarm revenue. Next page is capo outlay, you could just kinda look, look through that slide. Next page is capital outlet, you could just kinda look, look through that slide, um, to see some of the, um, equipment that's, that's in the budget. Not really too much there, uh, as significant other than you can see the police vehicles of three eighty five.
How many do that get?
So, well.
She, we'd have to ask the chief.
No, it's not fun.
Discussion.
Or volunteer, volunteers are paying for.
Fire department?
Several of them for situations like where there's a barricaded.
Okay, okay, okay.
The, yeah, the revenue for that is a contribution from volunteers. I can't remember exactly the number, we'll have, um, the chief describe that.
We had, she mentioned the, we talked about the vehicles.
Yeah.
Say how many?
She said she had two, we had, we cut two, but she didn't say how many, I think it's like in that neighborhood of five or six.
I think she said four in the works, right?
So it's several Ford focuses, which are the detective vehicles.
What did she say about how many police vehicles?
I thought she said two.
Fusion, I'm sorry.
Two, two were attached.
See, you have four in the works.
Detectives, yeah.
Well, she just had some delivered.
Yeah, I thought she said two.
Four delivered.
Well, that's what it was.
We'll follow up.
Yeah, it's not, it's not four, it's more than that, I believe.
No, four delivered already.
Four delivered.
There's more in the, in line.
Cause remember, uh, two thousand sixteen, we actually bought Novi, or two thousand seventeen, we bought Novia.
She said two, but I don't think.
Yeah, because we're still waiting on the two thousand sixteen vehicles to be delivered.
Okay.
And this street repair, that's, no, that's repair, my fault, or street reconstruction, is that in addition to the paving, or we get from state?
No, that is, that is the paving for the state, some of it, that, that's a portion of it, then, uh, we have some broken out into repair and curb gutter and sidewalks. And then a portion into other natural street projects like the, uh, streetscaping and the Riverside Circle.
Normally, there's a list of places that are getting it done, could we get that?
That's in the C I P.
I'll go back to you.
In here?
Yeah, well, it's in the C I P list.
Which one are, where is that?
Page twenty six.
Maybe it's already, sorry. But we can get you an email with that.
That'd be great.
Hey, uh, so jump into page, uh, slide twenty six, general fund, capital projects. Uh, you can see all the way to the far right, we have bond projects of five point one million dollars. And, uh, to the left of that, from contributions, five hundred twenty eight thousand, from grant, one point three million. And out of current year revenues or Pego, three hundred fifty one thousand nine hundred for a total of seven million three hundred thirty thousand three hundred.
But what's the contribution, who is that being contributed from?
The majority of it's the Riverwalk Amphitheater, four hundred thousand.
Amphitheater, and that's, uh, coming from the state.
Is there any information about the amphitheater, or is there any information about the Riverside Circle?
Yes, so both were funded for design in F Y seventeen and design is ongoing for both.
And there are details are in C I P.
Is there any possible, Mr. Heath, to put Riverside Circle on an agenda coming up sometime soon?
It'll be allowed before they're done, but as soon as they're done, I'll, we can present the whole design and study it to, to you. I know they just finished the traffic phase with State Highway, State Highway, um, signed off on it and, uh, they also have, uh, changes that they're gonna make to the signals at Main and, uh, the signals at fifty and Mill.
So we'll put on the, we'll put on the barriers pending on the agenda and then we'll.
We can put on pending until, as soon as they produce the report, the final report, we can have it presented to council.
And what are we waiting for, for the North Palm, what are we waiting for?
Uh, it, we go to closing within the next maybe two weeks.
Okay.
Mr. Tillman, uh, explained that at the staff meeting on Monday.
And the Riverside Park parking lot, I know I spoke to Mike, um, and he was speaking to Deborah Williams, referenced to this.
She, I do, she, she has not shown up to multiple meetings.
I'll contact her again.
But the design is, uh, ongoing, the design is what's funded for this year, um, in the, uh, C I P, design of the parking lot. So we'll begin that process this year. Uh, and, and ultimately, um, if, if the church doesn't want, you know, to keep access, we'll just come access.
We can bring the other. Come in opposite direction.
Right off of Parsons Road.
Yeah, okay.
One other thing, and I don't, I don't, it's not on here, um, and I know it was part of the, uh, City Park Master Plan. And I, and I think what we come up with was one of the biggest needs over there was that rarely used, if ever ball field, to turn that into a parking lot and then move, you know, eliminate the parking lot there by Ben's Red Swings, what's the fault on that?
Basically, if you all put it in the City Park Master Plan, you know, it was full steam ahead, um, but it's got, the Park Master Plan still has to come to council.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't remember how everything's sequenced out, um, remember that when we wrote the C I P, it was, uh, the Park Master Plan was less baked.
Yeah.
Less fully baked, so, um, easy stuff was included, stuff for picnic island, uh, signs, trash cans, furniture, you know, benches, things like that.
Yeah.
Um, but the, but there's, there's, that kinda needs to be sequenced based on, you know, an engineering assessment of what needs to happen first in terms of power and, you know, what needs to happen second. And then council's gotta look at that plan, cause it, that hasn't come to council yet, right?
No, it has not.
Is, is there any way possible that we could take the Riverside Circle and do that the exact same way as well? Use that exact same flow chart?
No, it's a one, well, it's a two-shot process and phase one we just did, or it's underway right now, phase two is this shot. So you can't, you can't phase it, cause it's a, you know, you just have to build it and be done with it?
Well, I, that's, I have questions about building it, so that's why I would rather see the State Highway Administration thing, get the questions answered about flow, there's, the idea of changing the lights at Mill and Fifty, that's the first I've heard of that. And I wouldn't have heard of it, so I'm not, I'm not saying somebody wasn't telling us, but that's the first that I've heard of that, I just, I'm a little wary of putting it in here. I recognize that their stuff is going to be done, but I don't know whether or not I can support it until after I see what all the, all the things say. Now, granted, it could go in there and let's say something odd happens and it doesn't happen, it just gets rerouted into other stuff later on, I understand.
Or moved to nineteen.
Right, I just, that is, that is.
But it's a huge. It's an eighteen project, um, and it was a, it was a seventeen design, eighteen build. And, you know, that's what's in the C I P, so we're just following right now along with the.
I, I understand that, what I'm saying is that, uh, there's nothing that's come across this desk that says anything about that circle, nothing, and I'd like to see some stuff.
Okay.
Now, can I ask you one more question about North Palm, I see it on here twice, and I see it as a hundred and fifty thousand, is that the?
That's just the two different revenue sources, one is a grant and one is a.
Okay, which one is the grant, the seventy five or the hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty.
Okay.
And that's because we're going after the, I think, um, smart earth strategic demolition investment fund.
Okay.
And, and moving on to water sewer, uh, and it's on the next page, we can see we have an, um, proposal to reallocate some existing, uh, proceeds that are already on hand, that are restricted. They were being held as contingency for the wastewater treatment plant, we're far enough along now that we can lease some of those fees that are held for contingency and move them in for another purpose.
Okay.
And so, uh, that, that saved us from what otherwise would have been approximately, uh, one point two million of Pego, so that was, you know, important to be able to use those proceeds. And, uh, we had twenty thousand dollars of, uh, proceeds for, um, wastewater treatment plant materials warehouse, but otherwise, the total for wastewater, uh, for water sewer was one point two million. Parking capital projects, we have the, um, garage booth waterproofing membrane, parking study, and the new meters for downtown.
The parking study.
Yeah, the parking study is, uh, evaluating the capacity of parking.
No, I know what a parking study is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
We're doing a, a new one?
Yeah, I think the last one was oh seven, is that right?
Okay, remember the exact year, but it's been, it's been quite a while ago.
And so that's to, you know, evaluate need, demand and pricing.
And the new parking meters right underneath it, are those at least upgraded to the twenty first century?
Yeah, they're, they're the ones we saw, I don't know if you were there at the demonstration.
So the first ones will be installed this spring and, um.
This year or?
This year.
Like, in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, yeah, like within month, yeah, next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, Main Street will get all new ones and then, um, I think this is the second to last batch.
Will these stay on when the new upgrades come, or will they come down?
To me. The ones that are out here?
No, these new ones.
Oh, yeah, the, those will stay on, so that'll be the other spots in doubt, other parking lots like, um, uh, you know, the lot behind Rhodey Joe's, the, um, the ones on street, like on Market Street, and other streets that are not getting new streetscaping.
Keith, is the garage totally depreciated?
Uh, can, can you, can you answer that?
Could you check for me and see if there are?
Yeah, sure.
It's only been forty years.
I, I was just getting ready to say.
On this deal, yeah, just.
But you know, it gives us an idea how much longer this other stuff's gonna stay.
Well, I, I, you know, it's always a, it's always a, one of the charts that I always liked was leaving and coming, you know, and, yeah, cause.
There is some news that, uh, that we can share with you, that Jennifer was, uh, had done, done some discovery, uh, speaking to the engineers and they, they did, uh, identify a useful light. And we, we are coming up on it as far as, uh, you know, there's, so this condition study that we're getting done now.
How can that possibly be, we don't use the top two floors?
Cause these things only last.
I, I know, but I mean, there's not been, there's not been three cars parked up there except we knew I went up there, and your truck and my truck.
But underway is the study where we're getting more exact data, uh, so, but, but, but they reminded her that it's currently, uh, the end, the end time is in sight.
So, what I, what I would recommend, just from a, you know, I know we looked at privatization before. The, no, a, no, a fully depreciated asset as part of a deal could be really beneficial. And may be the, the thing that pushes us to a point of, maybe we should do it now. But I just, just as, and I'm not, I don't know the details, I'm just throwing that out, that, that's a.
There'll be no parking in there for a dollar for an hour anymore, now will there?
We're gonna get the study, we'll push this left or right.
Right.
When we get the study, it's due in the next, probably sixty days.
Oh, good, then, okay, so you're already got it.
It's underway, it's been awarded and we're, it's underway.
Perfect.
The condition, the garage, the condition study.
See, parking garage condition study.
See, I had a good, a, good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
But, but that was the news that they, they introduced her to, that, well, you know, and, you know.
Yeah, that's a, that's significant, that's significant.
That's a big statement, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so, moving on to the next page, uh, just as we seen when we did C I P, this is just showing our debt capacity. The next, over the next five years, we're showing how we plan to make use of that, that, uh, service capacity, uh, in our C I P plan. The final page, um, on page twenty nine, uh, this summarized our strengths, we've been talking all night about the general fund, fund balances, well, uh, it currently is strong, we're monitoring that carefully. Our bond rating of double A, uh, just, just increased from double A minus is largely due to, uh, that fund balance. Um, and, um, so another strength is, uh, we've been aggressive, I think, in maintaining an investment in our infrastructure, particularly in water sewer. We paid for a lot of, uh, needs and it's a good thing because we're not building up, uh, a liability for unfunded infrastructure. Uh, some concerns we talked about, we still have our, some unfunded liabilities and our water sewer reserves need to be replenished. And ongoing, uh, it's gonna be challenging to make sure we have increasing revenues to track increasing expenses and capital improvement needs.
Right.
And I think we've, we've made some adjustments in the unfunded liabilities that we're gonna reap the reward for down the road.
That's right.
So we've taken action in the appropriate manner and we should continue to, to look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, there are other questions, I.
Could I just ask this, if it's possible next year, when, when we get the budget, would it be possible to get this presentation as well? Because I sort of felt like questions on the fly came from today and some of the, some of the stuff I misunderstood, maybe if I'd had it a week or two before we did this, I'd been better.
Yeah, I think.
I'd have been able to better articulate my agreements with you, as the president.
I'll speak for you, can we do that? We can deal with that. All right, I propose, propose a ten minute break, cause I need one, uh, and then we'll have the chief, will the fire chief come in? So, Keith, ten minutes, good.